So it looks like, is there anybody who is unable to unmute so that we can have staff? Okay, Sonya, can we, can you let me know when we have a quorum so that we can begin?
Like it. Yes, we definitely have a quorum.
Okay. So let me bring up my agenda. We will go ahead and begin the February 5th, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. It has been determined that it's not practical nor prudent for the commission and its committees to meet in person or pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D point 02. In light of the ongoing pandemic, it is not feasible for the commission to present at the regular location, and all members of the commission will be attending today via the Microsoft Teams app or through other electronic telephonic means. It is also not feasible for members of the public to attend the meeting and its regular location due to the ongoing pandemic, and so accordingly, no meeting is being held at the City Hall Conference Center in the Kellogg Building. So we'll begin today's meeting by doing a roll call, Sonya.
Commissioner Anderson is excused today. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Edgerton?
Here.
Commissioner Grill?
Here.
Commissioner Hung?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Oliver? Commissioner Lindkey?
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Here.
Commissioner Mucho Pa?
Here.
Commissioner Perryman?
Here.
Commissioner Presley? Okay, Commissioner Risberg?
Here.
Commissioner Said?
Here.
Commissioner Underwood?
Here.
And of course, the Chair.
All right. So the first item on the agenda today is we do have three new commissioners joining us that will be sworn in today. The commissioners are Mr. Jacob Riley, Mr. Simon Tagheoff, and Zaijun Yang. Luis will, who from the city will be doing the swearing in?
I believe we have our city clerk with us.
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, if I could have the three incoming commissioners, if you have a camera and want to turn it on, this would be the time, if you're not comfortable doing that or don't have the ability, that's fine, too. I'll be administering the oath to all three of you at the same time. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Jacob Riley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions.
To support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of St. Paul.
Of the City of St. Paul.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri.
So congratulations to the three new members. We look forward to working with you and hearing your input on the various subjects that we, as a commission, are tasked to address. Sometimes our meetings can get a little heated, and so we welcome your opinions into the discussion. The next item on the agenda, and I think perhaps actually if you could just introduce yourself really quickly, just with your name, sort of what brought you to the commission and what you look forward to doing, and then we can move on with the agenda. If we can start with Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jacob Riley. I know many of you. I live in, on the East Side, and I worked for PED for almost 10 years, so I'm super excited to be here. I came to the Planning Commission because I care very, very much about St. Paul, and I'm looking forward to working on everything. I'm excited to be on this side of the desk. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Yang?
Good morning, everyone, and the Chair. I'm so happy to be here. I joined the Metro Pop State University three years ago, and I'm teaching real estate finance. Part of my course is to incorporate the United Director Real Estate Program in St. Paul and the Minnesota, and educate students about how the history played around affecting our lives today. And I'm so happy to get into the Planning Commission. I believe our commission has a huge role in affecting the future real estate development upon our metropolitan cities, and I'm going to learn and do my best to contribute to your success. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Yang. Mr. Tagheoff?
Thank you. My name is Simon Tagheoff. I live in Ward 2 in Summit Hill. I've lived here for a few years. I came to the Planning Commission initially through a degree of community organizing around some local streets-related issues, and that led me to apply to serve on the Summit Hill Association District Council Board. In that capacity, I worked on several issues that ended up coming before the Planning Commission as Chair of the zoning and land use committee, and that made me extremely interesting to be part of this body. I've worked on several issues that have come before CNPC and the Water Planning Commission, and I'm excited to join and work with you all.
Thank you for your comments, gentlemen, and we look, like I said, we look forward to working with you. I don't have any new announcements for this week. Moving on to the next item, Luis, do you have any announcements?
Chair, yes, I do. A few things to note today, this morning. Good morning, everybody. Congratulations and welcome to the new commissioners and good morning to everybody else. Just wanted to point out, some of you may have seen this, but the City Council this week put forth a resolution of the city's priorities for the MinDOT Rethinking I-94 project. So I think a similar resolution has moved forward recently in Minneapolis. I encourage you to read it. I can put the link in the, in the box. Hopefully that went through. Secondly, happy to note, and the commissioners on the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee know this already, but we've been moving forward on the parking regulations zoning study, and so Tony Johnson, Menica Mohan have been working really hard on that. We do have a website now for the study, and I will share that. We also have an email address if you have questions. We're not yet taking comment on the study because we haven't opened the public comment period, but if you have big questions and maybe the website doesn't answer them, or if you know others in the community that have questions about the parking study, feel free to refer them to the website and, and the email address. Lastly, I'd just note, highlight, later in the meeting, I'm going to be going through a few documents that I sent. One I sent in advance and the other one I sent before the meeting. So the one sent a couple days ago was the Planning Commission Annual Report for 2020. Commissioners that are not new will, will know that we do this every year around this time as part of our annual meeting. We look back at the previous year to see what items, you know, what major items the commission looked at, as well as some other things that we decided to list this year just given how it was a different sort of year, 2020, as well as a couple of documents I forwarded just earlier today, both our 2021 work program as well as an additional kind of look at 2020 from sort of a milestone perspective. Projects, a lot of our projects go on for more than just a year, so just being able to measure progress on where we're at with those things. So I'll walk the commission through that later in the meeting, but just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Before moving on to the next, any questions for the director before we go on? And I should note, the Teams app gives you a variety of ways of alerting the presenters of how, of wanting to speak, but if you could, if the commissioners could please use the comment section to either type C or Q rather than raising your hands, that way we can keep a good, I can keep a good track of who wants to speak and in what order, and then I will call on you accordingly instead of using the raising your hand feature. So I would appreciate it. So are there any questions for the director? All right, seeing none, we can move on to the next item is the zoning committee. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. First, before I start, I also wanted to say just congratulations to all of our new commissioners. Looking forward to working with you. I'll go ahead and start with the report. As of now, I haven't received an updated, an updated list of agenda items for the upcoming site plan review meeting. The thought is, is when that information is available, we'll send that out. The upcoming zoning committee meeting is scheduled for February 11th with two items on the agenda for consideration, 981 University Avenue West, which is a conditional use permit concerning building height, and 1074 through 1096 James Avenue, the James Avenue Apartments, a conditional use permit concerning building height and variances concerning front yard and rear yard setbacks. For our January 28th zoning committee, we had one item under consideration. It was 1346 Arcade Street LLC, just to provide some information, which was a change and expansion of nonconforming use to add auto repair and outdoor auto sales to the existing auto body shop and dwelling. It also included variances for parking. To provide some background, the site has a pretty extensive and complex history. Initially, there was a gas station on the site that was converted to an auto body shop. In staff reports, staff provided a very detailed timeline concerning the history of the site, and then also findings that I would suggest those that need more information about the history to review, to really understand some of the complexities of the site. So this item was laid over from the, actually, the January 14th zoning committee meeting to allow staff to provide alternative findings and guidance to the zoning committee that really would support allowing vehicle cleaning in the garage addition behind the house and allowing the spray booth addition and Clear Avenue curb cuts to remain. There, there was no one, just to give you also, I know I went over this, but I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on this application there last time. There was no one that spoke in favor or opposition of the application. However, there were two letters of support for the application. The public hearing for the application was open during the January 14th zoning committee meeting, and hence it was closed during our last zoning committee meeting. So number one, there was no public testimony. I also want to highlight that the Payne-Falen District 5 Council's Executive Committee recommended approval of the application. The zoning committee voted 6-0 for approval of this application with nine additional conditions. And denial of the variance, variances of required parking. There was approval with conditions of variances of required landscaping and minimum distance between vehicular access and the arcade clear intersection. And there was a memo also provided by staff, Mr. Dermody, that really laid out some of the specifics of this conversation. But Chair, again, the zoning committee moved 6-0 approval for this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. So the motion coming out of committee is approval of the nonconforming use to add an auto repair and outdoor auto sales to an existing auto body shop. Approval of the variance for, for everything except for the parking, correct? Commissioner Baker?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So that is the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
If that was Baker, yes.
Yes. Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindkey?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mucho Pa?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Risberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
It looks like Commissioner Riley will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Commissioner Riley, is that just for this particular matter or for both matters today?
For both matters today.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tagheoff?
Tagheoff, I abstain from this particular vote. Thank you.
You're abstaining, too?
From this vote, yes.
And Commissioner Yang?
I abstained for the odd decision today.
For, is that going to be for both or just this one?
Both.
Okay, thank you. Unanimous.
All right, so that motion for approval of nonconforming use along with the variance except for the parking variance is approved. The next item, Commissioner Baker?
Chair, the next item is our Lexington Station Apartments. This item was before us last time, and we voted on it. From my understanding, it's coming back before us, and I want to pass that over to you and staff to highlight staff's perspective on this as we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. So this item did come before us two weeks ago. The procedural posture of it was, it was an approval by staff. The staff drafted a report. It came to the committee, the zoning committee. The zoning committee at that time approved the, the staff recommendations. It then came before us in the Planning Commission two weeks ago. There was a lot of discussion on both, on approval and denial of it before we took a vote. The motion coming out of committee was to approve. The motion failed, and we were working on drafting, or excuse me, the commissioners who voted in denial were working on coming up with the language for the purpose of the denial, and it was laid over for two weeks to give them additional time to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. At this time, we do need to take a vote on this matter. We, the, the, I think our obligation has not, well, we need to fulfill or finish providing the basis for the denial, and I believe we left off with Commissioner Perryman, who was in the process of trying to make a motion, and also Commissioner Wong. So I see that there is a comment by Commissioner Perryman. Commissioner Perryman, I was going to turn the floor over to you.
Gotcha. Turn on my video. What's up? Welcome, new commissioners. Yeah, I motion to deny the site plan based on finding one. The site plan is inconsistent with the 2040 comp plan specifically relating to various core values and community priorities, including equity, affordability, affordability, and sustainability.
Okay, is that the sole basis, Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Okay. So the basis for the denial is number one, relating to the comp plan. Is, is there a second?
Second.
And who is that?
Naida.
Mr. Perry, so motion made by Commissioner Perryman, seconded by Commissioner Presley. I think at this time, we can have discussion on the motion, and I see Commissioner Edgerton has a comment. Commissioner Edgerton?
Thank you, Chair. A question and a comment. First, I was not at the last meeting, so do I, so I did not vote then. Do I vote now?
I believe, I will turn it over to Mr. Warner. I believe that as long as you have reviewed all the materials, you were present for all the testimony provided into the record during zoning committee. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the commissioner can vote. Okay, thank, thank you. So my comment then, I guess what I would say is, this is my personal opinion. I don't personally see a legitimate reason to deny this application. In my opinion, it meets the zoning code requirements, does not require any variances. It's not asking, not receiving any subsidies from, from the public. The comp plan does have goals of affordable housing, sustainability, et cetera. But the comp plan does not require all applications, all new developments to have an affordable housing component to them, and so I don't really see that general goal as a justifiable reason to deny any application that doesn't have affordable, an affordable housing component. I just feel that we, we shouldn't be denying an application just because we don't like it. You know, we're not kings here. We have rule of law here in St. Paul, and so I plan to not vote for denial.
Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. I will defer to staff as seen Mr. Pereira has a comment before I make my comments.
Certainly. Director Pareda?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair and commissioners. I just wanted to rewind a little bit and follow up on something that was said at the last meeting. So we had talked about finding number one, comp plan consistency as a possible, you know, finding to deny. And the Chair and, the Chair indicated, and I confirmed, but I had a little bit of doubt when I confirmed it, that, you know, the finding of comp plan consistency alone could not be the sole rationale for denying a site plan that meets all other, all other required zoning findings. I, I did have a chance to follow up after the meeting to confirm that understanding and check with CAO, City Attorney's Office. So they confirmed that based on, you know, understanding of Minnesota case law that a comp plan alone as a regulatory device, especially with respect to the approval of conditional use permit and site plan applications, is reasonably doubtful. So using that understanding of, of law and, and sort of cases on this, on this matter in the past, and I don't want to speak for the City Attorney's Office, so Peter Warner's here. If you'd like to also comment, I would, I would encourage you to, to also weigh in on that. I just wanted to put that out there for the commission as you think about the motion.
Thank you, Director Pareda. And for clarification as well, we also, the, the motion was to lay over for those who wanted to, well, raise a motion in opposition or to deny, to have an opportunity to, to speak with staff, and it's my understanding that staff determined that their recommendation could not change. Is that correct? Or would, they didn't see a basis for changing it?
Chair, correct. So staff took a hard look at the, the two communicated rationales coming out of that meeting on the 22nd and looked back at the staff report and considered those things, and we don't see a reason or rationale to form the basis of denial.
I'll let Mr. Warner go first, and then I'll go back to Commissioner Baker. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, commissioners, and welcome, new commissioners. Congratulations. I just wanted to comment to follow up on, on what the planning administrator has, has said, and it is simply a reiteration of advice that I've given in the past, that comprehensive plans are not regulatory tools, they're visionary tools. The way the vision in a comprehensive plan is made into a regulation is through the adoption of official controls. City does not yet have an official control adopted with respect to affordability. And to also remind you that when you make your decisions, your decisions have to be reasonable and factually based. And so with that, I will simply say that relying on a, to deny a site plan application on a comprehensive plan goal that does not have an accompanying official control that's been adopted into the zoning code is, there is legal risk to that. That's pretty much my, my comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Commissioner Baker?
Okay, thanks, Chair. I appreciate that. I'm, I appreciate staff providing some context. I think, just, just a few points. First point is, I want to highlight, because I don't think I need to say anymore based on what staff said, I voted, I voted for this, for this project to move forward, which means that I was against the motion last time. And I just want to highlight a few things. First thing is, I completely understand and connect with the community and also my fellow commissioners with the concern around the affordability aspects of this project. I also think that the applicant could have done a whole lot more to connect with the community, keep them involved, allow them to be a part of the process, almost bring them alongside. When you are coming into a neighborhood, you are potentially trying to propose a building in an area, and I just think that more could have been done with engagement. That being the case, I truly do believe that affordability right now isn't necessarily a part of this conversation, the task at hand that we have to deal with concerning the site plan. And I want my fellow commissioners to think through what other options, think about the affordability and some other things that came up, and knowing that we may not be able to address it with this application, how and what other means and mechanisms can we get at some of those barriers that we see? And those are the kinds of conversations that I think that we need to have as commissioners and also with the city. I do think that we have a sphere of influence and a span of control, and I think some of the things that came up may be venturing outside of that span of control. control. I am in agreement with, uh, more affordability, uh, for housing in this, specifically in this area. I also am in agreement, uh, that there just needs to be more housing here in St. Paul. We, as a Commissioner, have consistently said that. There's an opportunity to do that. This site has been vacant for years. And I think that, um, moving forward, um, that there is little that I can do based on my vote, um, to deny this application. So thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Lindicki?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, I just wanna mirror what a lot of my colleagues have said today. Um, I've been thinking about this for two weeks. It's a difficult case. I, because I agree with a lot of the comments that were, um, in opposition to this application and, um, um, what they were saying about affordability in St. Paul and how big of a crisis it is. Um, but unfortunately for us today, there's nothing about affordability in the zoning code. We don't have any regulations about the rents, um, in our code, so we can't create those regulations by pointing to the comprehensive plan, cause it's not a legal document, as the city attorney has said today. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I think if we pretend that we can vote yes or no on developments because of affordability concerns, um, it's not a good idea. We'll be misleading people, misleading the public or activists working on equity and social justice issues that are really important. Um, we don't really have that power and the zoning code doesn't do it today. So if we wanna put rules about affordability into the St. Paul zoning code, we have to have these difficult conversations about translating those values that are in the comp plan into the legal details of regulation. It's not easy to do that. If we wanna make those policies, we can look at Minneapolis where they have inclusionary zoning and are now putting, uh, rent stabilization on a ballot measure, uh, for the election this year. Um, those are interesting ideas. They're not silver bullets, but they're the kinds of things that we can do as a planning commission. So, um, because we haven't done that work yet, um, this project meets all the zoning requirements and that's why I still support it.
Uh, Commissioner DeJoy and then Commissioner Hood?
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess some of my comments would be redundant, so I'll try and, uh, not reflect back to the comprehensive plan and some of the comments I had. I, um, I think it's a little misleading when we take almost three years to go through a comprehensive plan and then say it's not a legal document, it doesn't hold any weight. Um, the, the entire theme of our comprehensive plan is equity and there's plenty of, um, comments about affordability, but I'll leave that at that. What I, what also was discussed is about, um, preserving the unique geological, geographic, historic, significant characteristics of the city and environmentally sensitive areas. This is a community that has, um, quite a bit of low-income people. It's, it's part of the history of the city of St. Paul. And yet this development, let's not talk about affordability, its access, there's going to be quite, uh, a large number of people in the neighborhood that will not have access to this development. And that's my comment.
Commissioner Hood and then, uh, Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, Chair. So, I've been a planner for about 10 years professionally and I can say that I am less confident now in my vision than I was over a decade ago. Um, you know, with this specific site, we have an impressive mix of complex issues, from redlining to the construction of 94 and subsequent disinvestment. Um, and also too, just to kinda a- address another issue, um, the Wilder Foundation, which, uh, it appears has been essentially speculative land banking for, you know, 12 to 15 years. And despite the work that Wilder does, it, it, it really does feel like they could be doing something more on this parcel. Um, a- another thing too, that, to me, it makes it feel like the city and the neighborhood doesn't have really control of our land where you can have something like a small provision in the Jobs and Tax Cut Act, which is the, uh, Trump Tax Cut Bill, which created federal opportunity zones that allows for tax-advantaged investments in, in areas like this. And the city too, had, um, selected this area to be one of the, um, the number, the small number of opportunity zones. And it, this type of, um, this type of policy, you know, coming down from the federal level, it doesn't really deliver the fine-grained local urbanism that we love. The type of building that we see today is the type of investment that we've seen across the country in opportunity zones. And it really feels weird that your community can be shaped by legislation that was drafted by the co-founder of Napster, um, as, as weird as that sounds. But, you know, as a, as it pertains to the comp plan in general, um, one of the things that's been more humbling to me and something I've been thinking about a lot for the past two weeks, is how you can have one document and you could have two people that look at it entirely different. So when we say, does this meet the comp plan, my thought as a planner is, look, this is a mixed-use development near a light rail station on an infill site that doesn't tear down any buildings and includes some affordability. On paper, that absolutely looks like a win. However, there's a huge equity component in the comp plan and it's weird, it's, it's like a weird balance that we need to strike and a fine line that we need to walk. And I, I mean, I just wanna be upfront and say, as a citizen, it is shocking. The rents do seem high, even for affordable, uh, housing. Um, you know, one of the things that my wife pointed out last night when we were talking about this is, the, the one-bedrooms that are proposed, it's more than our mortgage on a three-bedroom house. And that's really a wake-up call for me, um, in the housing crisis that we have. Um, thankfully, we're lucky enough to, that, you know, have the resources to buy a house, you know, seven, eight years ago. But, um, but I, but I keep coming back to this issue that we today need to make a quasi-judicial decision on the site plan. I've been thinking about the Taco Bell vote on Snelling that we had not too long ago. Uh, just a little confession, I like Taco Bell. That's not something I say publicly very often, but do I, do I think that's a good spot for Taco Bell? Not really. Do we want more drive-throughs? Absolutely not. But does it meet our zoning code? It kinda does, right? Like, and, and, and that's really the issue at hand, um, where we have to balance what we maybe personally want versus what the zoning code says. And as mentioned by previous, um, uh, Commissioners, our code doesn't give us a legal framework, like whether through the comp plan or through affordable housing, to deny this development. Um, inclusionary housing, I wanna be on record as saying that's something that the city should do, but we don't have that framework today. So really, for those reasons, I will, um, kind of, uh, be voting for, excuse me, in, against the resolution today. So, thank you, and I also apologize for taking five minutes of everyone's time.
Uh, Commissioner Wong and then Commissioner McMurtry?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I've been thinking a lot about this vote and it's been really weighing on me for many reasons, and I wanna take the time to share why, because, um, it's actually not just about this vote or even about this development. It's really about how, um, I wanna approach our responsibility as planning Commissioners and how I wanna be engaged in the broader field of urban planning. And one of the dynamics that I've seen a lot in planning, and this is across many experiences in multiple cities, not just St. Paul, is whiteness in planning. And when I say that, I don't mean white people in planning. I mean, whiteness that has been embedded in the institutions and codes and systems and laws that we have all as a Commission and staff inherited, right? It shows up in so many places and it's a challenge that we're all tackling together as Commissioners and with staff's abundant, abundant support. Um, I think this, this whiteness in planning is like a huge iceberg, because systemic change is hard and takes a long time and a lot of work to move. Um, for, for our communities, it's like sharp icicles with, with very acute and very specific heart. Just give me a couple of seconds to, to gather myself. Thanks for your patience. Um, and, and whiteness in planning is, is hard to define, but I think we know it when we see it. It is using area median income to define affordability when that disadvantages and effectively excludes the low-wealth and BIPOC residents who need affordable housing the most. that this site has been blighted for so long. And at least someone wants to do something about it without acknowledging that vacant land and blight are an intentional result of racialized disinvestment and redlining. It is preferring the cultural, economic and physical displacement of low-wealth BIPOC renters over an empty lot. It is taking an incredibly complex community development issue that will impact hundreds of BIPOC low-wealth renters and simplifying it down to a potential legal risk. Whiteness is asking residents to trust us with their dreams and visions of a future community, asking them to engage and contribute to comp plans and stationary plans and neighborhood plans, asking them to put their labor and their dreams and their vision into that. And then breaking that trust when the rubber hits the road, because it turns out that their engagement and their voice doesn't hold any water. It is asking residents for engagement when it benefits plans, but creating barriers to listening to them and allowing us to listen to them when it might create tensions or problems. So for, for all of those reasons, um, I'm choosing to vote along with Commissioner Perryman because I don't want to perpetuate this harm with the power that I hold as a planning Commissioner. And I know, I know very well that whatever decision is made here goes to City Council, could be changed, could be overturned, could be kept. But I just wanna walk away from this call knowing that I did everything as a Commissioner to live up to those values that we claim supposedly as a city and to be accountable to the people that I represent. Thank you.
Commissioner McMur- um, and thank you for those comments, Commissioner Wong. Uh, Commissioner McMurtry?
Thank you, Chair. I just had one question, uh, from my own understanding. What happens in, in the event that today's resolution, um, is denied? What happens next with, um, just with this process?
Um, I have a, uh, an understanding of it, but I think for, to get a, a complete accurate understanding, I'll turn to Mr. Warner.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Commissioner, one possibility might be that, uh, a denial, the application would cause the applicant to appeal to City Council. The applicant may choose not to appeal to City Council in the event of a denial, but the applicant certainly would have the opportunity to do that in the event of a denial.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes, thank you and thank you, Commissioner Wong, uh, for those comments as, as well. Um, yes, just going back to a few things, uh, Taco Bell was brought up. I'm a huge fan of Taco Bell. I don't hide that one. Um, but that was a slightly different, uh, situation, of course. It wasn't a site plan, but, uh, quoting, uh, previous Commissioners, some, some did use their kingly powers to deny that one, even though it was, uh, uh, overturned and voted in support of by the, uh, the Planning Commission. So the zoning committee voted against that one. Planning Commission voted to support that and then it was appealed to the City Council, uh, sort of stating that we do have the ability to, uh, vote on these things as we feel that with our own rationale from our own findings and information. Um, the, the, there's been talks of legal ramifications and, and statements that I feel have been somewhat intimidating to, uh, Commissioners. Uh, that is not a fear that we should have. No one's going to, uh, come and take your house away from you for, for this vote. You have the ability to, to vote based on, uh, your, your findings and your, and your rationale. Uh, we have, if, if we lined up every decision we've made, there is definitely not a universal, uh, vote from, from anyone. Uh, people have used their own findings and information. Um, and yeah, and just going back to Commissioners Wong, it's the, I, I made my decision up on this long ago, but of course, we don't live in, we're not a sequestered, uh, jury living in a silo. We see the, the emails that come and the comments and different things and it's, and it's the people saying, oh, it's an eyesore, I, I don't like it being nothing versus this is gonna be a life-altering change for community members. And those do not sit same on the scale, uh, for me. So we have this ability to do this, uh, if, if not now, when, uh, multiple Commissioners have talked about the, that this continues to happen and we do nothing. We have the power and the ability to do this now. Um, so, yes, that's my comment. Thank you.
So, uh, I see Commissioner Tagiaff wants to make a comment. Commissioner Tagiaff, are you gonna be abstaining from the vote or, or was it just for the first? I know the other two Commissioners said it would be for both votes, but I don't think you said it was gonna be for both. Is that correct?
That's correct. I feel, um, I feel comfortable voting on the, um, on the motion that's before us, which is whether to approve or deny based on, um, the comp plan alone. I feel that's it. I feel that's the decision I can take, uh, I can take an opinion on. Um, the comments I wanted to make on this, and I wanted to assure my, um, my fellow Commissioners that I've spent numerous hours over the past, um, two weeks reviewing the, uh, complete public record on this, reading all the documents, and I feel I can understand this, um, development reasonably well. Um, on the vote itself, I accept the legal, um, advice essentially that our hands are tied, um, essentially a visionary doc, um, it's not a regulatory control. Um, however, that doesn't mean that there are no issues with this, um, with this application. Um, reviewing it, it is characterized by a, a lack of engagement and a lack of respect for the surrounding communities. You can see that in numerous aspects of the building's, um, design, its massing, which is designed to occupy the entire site and be as tall as possible and create as much profit as possible for the developer. The lack of attention pays to, um, anything in, in terms of the way it sits in the landscape and, and, and the other, um, other buildings nearby, there's no, there's no attention paid to that, attention paid to that at all. For example, the, um, the Carty Heights Development, the immediate southwest, has a garden, which is supposedly for, I imagine, for the residents to walk around, and that garden will now be in shadow. Um, and they would be deprived of any meaningful views aside from a six-story building. Um, there's very little attention paid to ensuring there are complete sidewalks and complete streets. Um, the, the people who, who are listening to this call, um, and will have worked so hard potentially on community-driven initiatives through District Councils such as the Lexington Area Station Plan, um, should, um, I think, should be justifiably enraged and angered. There was a thorough community process and to set aside, uh, um, an, an area plan that's extremely well-thought-out and very specific, um, on details such as connecting Fuller Avenue and things like this, um, on the basis of some language in, in essentially a footnote saying that, oh, well, until the city takes action, we can disregard, um, strikes me as being very, um, antithetic towards the, towards the community, whatever the legal status of that. Um, I do think there are a number of problems with this development in terms of its compliance with the, um, with particularly T4 Zone District. I don't think it's pedestrian-friendly. I think it impedes pedestrian access, particularly east to west. Um, I don't think it's, um, it, it cogn- it's cognizant of any pre-existing city approved plans as it's required to under 63, 66.344A. Um, evidently, no effort was made for any form of, um, connection and incorporation to the surrounding area. Um, I don't think its compliance would be too, which is transitions to lower-density neighborhoods. Little to no attention has been paid to transitions of any kind in density. Um, and I don't think it pays attention to 66.344B16, which is the interconnected street nally network. Um, the existing street nally network should be preserved and extended as part of any new development. If the street network has been interrupted, it should be restored wherever possible. Um, I see nothing in the, um, in, in the nature of the site. In fact, it was two parcels presumably to allow, um, an east-west connection. The developer chose to make a single mast building with no through-access, for example. This is all by way of comment to say that, um, I, I strongly disagree with this, um, application as formed, even if, um, I understand that on the basis of the narrow motion today, which is, can we deny on the basis of the comp plan? I feel we aggressively cannot. Um, I think there are a number of grounds that the committee could consider and I'm, it's a shame they have not. That's my comment.
I see Commissioner Mucho Power and then, um, well, Commissioner Mucho Power. And before, uh, going to Commissioner Mucho Power, it, it looks like some, uh, people who are members of the community who are, uh, who are, uh, attending today, and we thank you for taking the time. Um, we know that this is an incredibly important vote for the community. Uh, but I would ask commissioners to disregard any comments that are outside of the public record, as this is a quasi-digital, uh, peti- uh, application. Commissioner Wong, uh, Muchapau?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, okay. So first, I just want to thank all the commissioners, uh, particularly Commissioner Hong, DeJoy, um, and Perryman for your motion. And I agree with all of you. Um, and I've said this so many times before too, that like we find ourselves in this situation over and over again. So I'm not, I'm just, I don't want to repeat everybody. I just want to say that I really agree with those things. And this, this is not the first time that this has happened. Um, I want to encourage commissioners that are on the fence or, um, still trying to make your decision on, on this vote that like you can vote against it. I know that there is a strong argument that there's no legal finding that, um, uh, could, I guess, legitimize this vote if you vote against it. But, um, that is still an option. Um, I, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer and so, um, but what I hear often is that, um, you know, a lot of law is based on precedent and I, I, I couldn't, I cannot vote to approve this. Um, I can't set that precedent. I mean, like, I feel like we are constantly just put in this position and where our hands are tied and we cannot, like, we feel like we can't make a decision. And like, setting that precedent, I think it's not the direction that we want to go in as a city and as commissioners. So I will, um, be voting to support, uh, Commissioner Perryman's motion.
Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. I will be brief. I, I don't, um, I don't think that, I may be wrong on this, but, um, I guess to support others that says that, uh, you can, you can vote against this, uh, application, I completely agree. And I, I, I am planning to vote to move this application forward. Um, but I do want to highlight that, um, I know that a lot of these, um, applications start to get very, um, the conversation starts to get tense. And even though I am voting to move this forward, I will not say to a fellow commissioner, and my goal is not to threaten, um, any commissioner to say, um, that there will be an issue if you, um, vote against it. You will, you will, you were pulled into this commission, uh, for a certain reason and a certain perspective, and we all have one vote. I respect all of those that, uh, vote, even if you vote against me. Um, I've stated why I am going to vote the way I do. Um, but I also want to agree, um, that everybody needs to vote where they feel with a basis on, uh, moving forward. So that's all I'll say, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Um, and I appreciate those comments. I, I do think it's a, it's a divisive, uh, question. Um, a- a- and I think it, it poses, uh, almost like an internal, uh, questions of ourself, not, not of ourselves, but of, 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 like Commissioner Hood said, two people can view, um, a standard or, uh, a particular application, and both have reasonable rational reasons for why, why they view the, the item the way that they do. And I, and I think we, it's more about having respect for both views. And certainly to Commissioner Perryman's point, um, I, you know, uh, he's in, there, the, the commission can, uh, as long as we, as long as there's factual reasons articulated, uh, even if it's a, uh, advise the council, um, vote to deny, um, whether or not that's advisable, that would be for each independent commissioner to, to make that determination. Uh, Commissioner Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to, um, I really, really appreciated, um, things everyone has said and, uh, and something Commissioner Muchapau said about, um, I mean, like, how many times many of us in this body have been here? And, um, so many times and, and so I am act- I am very grateful for the attention that finally has been brought to this work and the, um, and the awareness. Um, the, the calls I received from neighbors and others asking like, what is going on with this project? And I took every opportunity to say, we have been saying these things over and over again with projects and that the things that we want to see, that we want to be able to support, need to be in law. They, they need to be, they, they, they need to be in places that they're not now, and that is not understood. And, um, and so I am so grateful to be a part of this body and with this group, um, to be able to, to call those things out. And, um, I just, I ju- give, given what is before us, um, I am, um, following in the comments of Commissioners Baker and Lindicky and others, um, for this vote. But I just, um, I am grateful that finally I feel like the problems that we face are being seen. And I, and I really, really hope something comes of it.
Um, thank you for that comment, Commissioner Underwood. Um, I will say in the process of this, um, I think I became aware that we have been, in a sense, a very passive commission. And I think, uh, we will have a larger discussion on that, uh, later on in the agenda. Uh, but I do think, I do think there is an avenue for more engagement, uh, in the part of the commission. So that's, that's, we'll have that discussion in later items. But, uh, it is, it is something that for those of us, uh, and you know, Commissioner Lindicky, Underwood, and, uh, other, um, other, other commissioners that have been serving for a longer period, Edgerton. Uh, we know, you know, we all know that this is something that has come up repeatedly and repeatedly, and we keep asking for tools. And we keep asking for, um, you know, the, the, a, a solution to help us with these frustrations. And we have been, in a sense, relying on staff to give us those tools. And I think it, it, it might be a time to have the discussion of whether, what the commission can do on, on, on its own. So, um, if there's no additional comments, Commissioner Warner, could you, um, Commissioner, Mr. Warner, could you explain, uh, how, uh, the vote, i- if, if, if a person votes to deny, um, the method, if they vote to deny or vote to approve, whether they're required to, how they're required to state their basis on the record?
Uh, th- th- thank you, Chair. Commissioners, the, the motion before you is, uh, a motion to deny the application based on, I believe it's finding number one. Uh, the maker of the motion has stated his reasons. Uh, you can, uh, you can vote, uh, and when you vote, you, because this is a denial, you will have to articulate your reasons on the record. You can do that as simply as saying, I join in the reasons cited by the maker of the motion. Uh, that is probably the easiest thing to do. You could add your own conditions as well. Again, I encourage you to remember that those reasons have to be factually based. And, uh, if I may, Chair, I just, could I just make one more additional comment? Because we have a, a new commissioner, uh, who's going to vote and is it, Commissioner, uh, I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. I'm sure I'll do, is it Tagheff?
Tagheff. You wouldn't be the first.
Tagheff, thank you. Uh, and because you're a new commissioner, I just wanted to point out that, um, you articulated some reasons, uh, that are opposite of, 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 I'm sorry, not opposite, but are, are different than the reasons offered by the maker of the motion. And it strikes me that those reasons would likely fall under section sixty-one, four oh one, C four and five, having to do with the aspects of designs, the, the comments that you made. And so you have a couple of options here. You could simply add those to the record or you would, uh, have the opportunity to ask the maker of the motion. And the second, if you would consider that to be a friendly amendment as an additional reason. And, and if that were adopted, then your fellow commissioners would have the opportunity to say, I, you know, I, I join in, in those as well. So there'd essentially be, uh, two reasons articulated, uh, based on the standards that are in the zoning code for denial of the site plan application. So I'll leave that up to you, but that is, uh, because you're new, I just wanted to point out that you have that option.
Commissioner Tagheoff, would you, uh, like Commissioner Perryman to consider that as a friendly amendment to his motion?
I had a question first.
Oh, go ahead.
My, my question is this, um, if the motion falls, in other words, does not get passed in its current form, does that, um, qualify as, um, an approval? Or is the mo- is the project essentially in limbo and would need a new motion to approve?
It's my understanding, Commissioner, I mean, uh, Mr. Warner can correct me, but it would be that we would then have to entertain another motion.
That's correct, uh, Chair. And if I could?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Commissioners, you have already denied the application because the way the Minnesota law is written, a, a failure to approve a motion to approve, uh, constitutes a denial. And so that is, has been done. What you're doing now is the, is the next step to complete that process is to articulate your reasons why. So, uh, Commissioner, to your question, if this motion to, uh, approve the denial, if you will, fails, there will have to be another motion made.
To, uh, to approve or deny or in one direction only?
Well, the logical motion would be to, uh, approve the recommendation of the zoning committee.
Okay, then to answer your first question, um, my concern about ad- adding on reasons, um, is that, um, I don't feel I've had or anyone's had the time to properly consider whether these reasons might form, um, a legal basis. If I were to propose adding several of these reasons that I've considered, um, I would want that to be something that the commission would have an opportunity to review in detail and think through before casting a vote on it. Um, so I don't see how I can responsibly add, um, these additional considerations into the last minute and would, um, would essentially vote on the motion as presented, which I think is clear at this point.
Okay, I, I don't, um, I think if a commissioner would want to rely, uh, that's, that's okay. Um, but I think if a commissioner would, when, whenever they vote yes or no, if they vote yes in favor of the motion to deny and they have to articulate their reasons, they, they could say, uh, and Mr. Warner, correct me if I'm wrong, but they could say for the reasons articulated by the maker of the motion and also the reasons articulated by Commissioner Tagheoff, if they felt comfortable adding those?
They certainly could. And I will just remind, uh, the Chair and the Commission, you, in order to, uh, fulfill the spirit and intent of Minnesota statute fifteen ninety-nine, you have to take a vote today. You do not have the luxury of laying it or.
Okay, so is there any additional comments or questions before we take a vote? Seeing none. Sonia, could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner DeJoy?
I vote in favor of the motion to deny based on finding number one and cited by the maker of the motion.
Commissioner Edgen?
No.
Commissioner Grill?
No.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes, I vote, um, and cite the reasons, um, brought up by Commissioner Perryman and Commissioner Tagheff.
Commissioner Lindicky?
No.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes, uh, for the reasons articulated by, um, the maker of the motion.
Commissioner Muchapau?
Uh, yes, for the same reasons as the maker of the motion. And I'd like to also add, um, Commissioner Tagheff.
Commissioner Seid?
Yes, the reason that I, uh, must bring in, uh, resolutions.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes, based on the previous, uh, my stated motions also is the, uh, mo- uh, information brought forth by Commissioner Tagheff.
Commissioner Rissberg?
I vote yes, um, in accordance with the maker of the motion by Commissioner Perryman and the additional information by Commissioner Tagheff.
Commissioner Rissberg? Commissioner Rissberg?
No.
Commissioner Underwood?
No.
Commissioner Tagheff?
Um, then if I'm allowed to add reasons, I will, um, vote yes, um, on the basis of the various other pieces I articulated.
Eight, seven.
So the motion, the motion, uh, to deny the applications, uh, is approved. So the motion, uh, the, the site plan is not approved, um, for, um, I guess for the reasons that, uh, of the maker of the motion, as well as the certain commissioners relied on the, uh, reasons by Commissioner Tagheff. The next item on the agenda is the comp plan committee. Uh, Commissioner Grill?
Uh, so the comp c- plan committee, um, met again yesterday, um, on Wednesday evening for part two of three of, um, reviewing of the parking study. Um, it's going along well. Um, the parking study also has a website up. Um, so I, I believe staff has the, the link available and you can get there through the planning commission pages. Um, but we'll be doing one more meeting, uh, next week on Wednesday, the, uh, tenth, um, for the last of, of the three meetings on the, um, parking study. And that is it.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. Any questions, uh, about the comp plan meeting? All right, seeing none. Um, transportation committee, Commissioner Rissberg?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, our next meeting is this coming Monday, February eighth. Um, it'll be an informational item, um, on the street improvements, uh, that have been planned near Highland Bridge. Um, I encourage everybody to attend, uh, if they want to hear more about, uh, three intersections, uh, that are moving, uh, from a three-legged intersection to a four-legged intersection, um, around the, um, former Ford site. Um, and as part of the Highland Bridge project, um, our last meeting was canceled, so this is the upcoming meeting. I also want to give, um, commissioners a heads up, uh, that our February twenty-second meeting, um, will be, um, on the Hillcrest transportation analysis. And if you're interested in the Hillcrest project, that might be one that you'll, uh, want to attend. Um, that's the end of my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Rissberg. Any questions for Commissioner Rissberg or Mr. Dermody, if he's on the phone, about transportation? And then communications nominations committee, uh, Commissioner Underwood?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, a few things, uh, members received from, uh, Director Pieda, the, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, planning report. Um, it is, um, there's a little bit more there than in the, the past few reports, um, but there's been a whole lot done. Um, really appreciate your time, uh, reviewing that and then, um, sharing far and wide. Uh, it is a really, really great resource for, um, explaining this work and seeing what's in progress. Um, we have our three new commissioners today and, uh, the nominations committee, um, has forwarded recommendations. has forwarded recommendations for three other wards to the mayor's office. I want to thank my fellow members for that work. We've, we've received really strong applications and I'm excited for the addition of, of members to fill vacancies and to address those spots where members have been term limited. And then finally, the planning director will send around to Steering Committee the recommendations for officers. That needs to go through Steering Committee before coming to the full board. So that's it for me. Thanks so much.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Underwood. And I just want to say thanks also to the Communications Nominations Committee. And it seems like we've sort, we've gotten into a routine now of how to fill these vacancies up. So I think it's great. Would any of those new vacancies, I know there are some commissioners who have, who have stayed on, but for other personal issues or, or work issues are, will be leaving the commission, would any of the new proposals take over any of those spots for, for their information?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're working through that right now. We did receive preferences from the new members and just need to organize the positions. Some more to come.
Okay, thank you. Director Pereda on the annual report?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I sent to you the annual report earlier this week. I'm trying to figure out how to share it, screen share it. I've got too many things open. This is, this is not it. This is the other thing that I wanted to share with you. Hang on one second. All right. So this is what was sent out previously to the Commissioners. So the Communication Nominations Committee, as Chair Underwood stated, have been working on this. Usually in the past, you'll remember, we, we've had sort of a four-page format. Given that it was a different kind of year, we decided to take a little more time on various components. So we spoke a bit about some zoning cases, just to kind of, you know, sort of be illustrative about the sorts of projects that were before the commission this year. That was a bit of a change. We also decided to highlight environmental review. This is something that's a little bit more behind the scenes with PED, but it's an important piece of our work that I, I wanted to kind of spotlight a bit. We were very busy because of, you know, the CARES Act and some additional HUD dollars that came through as related to the pandemic. So something to be aware of. Obviously, you, you know about the zoning studies. So the RM study and District 14, 15 residential design standards studies that went through the Planning Commission were recommended and went along to City Council for adoption. And so just some, some of that has broken out in more detail. Transportation projects, various master planning benchmarks here, work with Wesco on their equity scorecard, and then the comprehensive plan. So that is the annual report. If you have comments after you review it, let us know. But typically, the next step would be for us to put together a letter and transmit it to the mayor and City Council. So, yeah, so we don't have that letter prepared yet, but we can shortly. And so if you want to take a couple of days and take a look at this, send me any additional thoughts that you might have on the annual report. I don't know if anybody has any questions and we can move on to the other couple of documents I sent.
Any questions for Director Pereda on the annual report? If you can move on to the next document, please.
Okay. So that's not it. Let's see here. So the, another document that I sent this morning is what I call, how, how did we do? Which was sort of the, the 2020, a look at the 2020 year. And so it's, you know, but perhaps a bit redundant with, with the annual report, but it gets into a little more detail with each project or functional area. And, you know, what, what sort of happened, where there are key milestones reached. And then the phase, so there's a milestone column that says any sort of major benchmark we hit on a project. And then the phase means, it gives you a sense of like where we are in time. So is it just starting? Is it in sort of a staff phase where we're working on a, a report or maybe community engagement or we participate on a committee? Or is it going through an official review process? For instance, coming to you at the Planning Commission or, or maybe it's at the City Council, that sort of thing. And then if it's an ongoing project, it, it may not have as clear sense of where we're at in the, in the phasing, but it's, it's going to continue, you know, sort of indefinitely. So that, that's kind of the structure of this, this document. And for some reason, I'm having trouble. Can you see this now?
We can.
How did we do? Okay, good. So I have a bit of a, a, this sort of a description that can, I can walk through to highlight a few things here. So a few highlights, obviously, the comprehensive plan was adopted or accepted by the Met Council for city adoption in November and then followed by City Council formal adoption the same month. So a huge benchmark and, you know, just the, the amount of time and energy it took for the city, the community and, and commission and staff to get here is important. It's a ten-year document, so we have, not to say we have plenty of time, but there is time to, you know, it, to begin implementation. And that's something that we, we at staff, at the staff level are, are ready to do with the commission. The HUD consolidated plan, which was a five-year plan for HUD dollars, that was also approved by the City Council and accepted by HUD, which is, is a, a great resource for, for housing-related issues and data. And just to get a sense of how we're using our HUD dollars. So I encourage you to take a look at that. It's a five-year document. Substantial progress on, on plan review for both the Gold Line and Rush Line Bus, Bus Rapid Transit projects this year. Great news about Network Next, which is Metro Transit's process to chart out, you know, what both regular bus service, but also their focus this year was, where are the next arterial bus rapid transit lines going to be? So they did a bunch of study, boiled it down to about 11 finalists. And St. Paul, we had four of the top scoring, we had two of the top four scoring ones in St. Paul. So we have it for, in terms of next future, short-term future implementation, which gives us a good shot at, at having that next line in St. Paul. And that would be sort of adopted into their plans officially. So they've been taking input this month and our city, our city leaders, including the mayor, as well as our Transportation Committee have been very active in that conversation. So that's exciting. On the master plan sites front, we, so Highland Bridge, the master plan amendments, as you know, related text amendments, master site plan, a plat, plats, infrastructure grading plans and initial vertical construction advanced in 2020. So just a lot of work there. Hillcrest master planning continued. So Commissioner DeJoy has been very involved, as well as other members of the community on the Community Advisory Committee. So we moved to 20 community priorities shaped by the Community Advisory Committee to four kind of land use maps or approaches, to, down to two kind of finalist scenarios for consideration by the end of the year. And now we're doing technical study, infrastructure, water and transportation and other things like that on those two finalists. And we'll be going out to the, the public shortly for input. I mentioned the two big zoning studies, the RM study and the District 14, 15 design standards. We also had a, a benchmark of the definition of family study, receiving a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and that's off to City Council now. Several items that were not on our work program that I highlighted and, well, I just bolded. So, so planning staff supported the design launch and review of applications for the Bridge Fund Relief Program for families and businesses in the spring. We also provided support to the Design Center, which was something not officially on our work program, given capacity, but did end up assisting with reviews of the actual Hillcrest site in terms of the initial concepts, 848 Payne and 1619 Dayton. So that's something that is, is great. And we're trying to also think, figure out now the future of the Design Center. It's, it's kind of a collaboration right now between three city departments and trying to figure out a way to make that a little more sustainable and get some outside involvement as well, sort of outside of the city involvement. Another project was Resilient Communities Project. This was through the U of M and the Met Council. And so we went after a program that provided some student assistance on a project that we initially thought was related to our industrial, upcoming industrial zoning study you'll see on the 20, 2021 work program. But it became a little more general as we got into it and became sort of a, a way to engage with individual workers in, in St. Paul and to sort of get assessment of what has their experience been with, with employment during the pandemic, sort of, you know, job loss? What, what industries are they working in if they are working now? What are their strategies going forward? And this sort of brings in a bit of a workforce development component. The initial idea was that it would be tied to businesses in industrial growth, industrial sectors, and particularly those that are growing in terms of employment. And how could that inform our industrial land use project or study this year? So we did get some good information from that and still reviewing that and will help us move into this year's work. A few things we didn't get to that you may notice and sort of high level the environmental reviews for, so for the Rivers Edge Project, the Ramsey West Project, Luther Seminary, it's a bit sort of on pause, and the Snelling Midway Site. So there's an environmental review document that actually it's a, got a five-year period. It expires this August. So we anticipate that that may, that update process may happen this year. So unless others, people have questions about that, I can talk about the 21 work program. I'll pause for a second. And if not, I will go to that 21. Can you see the 21 planning work program on my screen?
We can.
Okay. So kind of, it's organized similarly, a lot of the same projects you'll see. But what we've tried to do this year is a little more information about tasks for each project that are moving forward, as well as our key staff listed. So if you have, you know, questions about something on the list, they can be resourced people. And then also the, sort of the why, you know, what are we, what's the reason for us engaging in this work? So a little bit different format from last year, gives you a little bit more detail about sort of what, what's ahead. So in terms of like sort of themes for this year, looking forward, we expect more activity this year on some of the larger development sites. So the Rivers Edge Project I mentioned, we've been in touch recently after a bit of a communication gap with the developer and Ramsey County on this site downtown and working with them on sort of informing them about zoning applications and processes. But we're also going to be talking to them about public realm design coming, coming up with some of other, other city departments. I mentioned the Snelling Midway environmental review document update that may occur. We also expect some additional development, the Highland Bridge site, as well as getting into a review of a master plan document for the Hillcrest site later in the year. In terms of transit, which is on this screen, I just realized the big kind of highlight is the Riverview Transit Corridor Project is moving forward, led by the county. There's going to be various committees. Some of those are technical involving staff and elected officials. And some of them are more community focused and involving members of the community, including our Commissioner Grill, who will be involved on the Station Area Planning Task Force. So that will begin to meet, as well as a broader Community Advisory Committee for Riverview. And we also will see further plan review progress on both the Gold Line and the Rush Line BRT projects. In terms of moving forward on the comprehensive plan, you'll notice towards the end of the Neighborhood and Site Redevelopment Planning Section, District Plans Review. So every year we have sort of ongoing district planning updates happening with, working with various district councils. But in light of our new comprehensive plan, we need to update our guidelines documents so that they have the latest and greatest in terms of Comp Plan 2040 policy to, to be looking at. But also it's a chance for us to have a conversation with the district councils to be understanding, you know, if they have a district plan adopted and if it hasn't been updated in a while, you know, or do they have plans for updates? Do they think that decertification may make sense? You know, do they, you know, are they going to be moving forward on a district plan update formally? To, to give, you know, have a conversation with them on that. So those sort of related items that kind of straddle Comp Plan implementation and, and district sort of neighborhood planning. Various zoning studies will be advancing on the screen here. So we'll, as we've mentioned, the city parking regulation standards study. It's a better name for it than that, but essentially updating our parking requirements, looking at strategic parking reductions or elimination will be moving forward. We have the various other studies that are required by law. So the Mississippi River Critical Area Ordinance Update will be moving forward. The Religious Accessory Use Zoning Study, which is required due to, actually due to a legal settlement with the city. Shortly here, you'll be seeing a pretty short study, the Unsheltered Homeless Services Study. This is a, a use that gets at the need for daytime shelter services. And so we have a text amendment coming to you very, fairly soon to, to accommodate that use. I mentioned this industrial study, which you can read a little bit more there. And then the Comp and Neighborhood Committee has also heard already about two studies listed here. The one-to-four unit infill housing study and the intent of the zoning code study, which will look at our site plan and conditional use permit findings in part. Both of those thinking about, you know, an eye towards, you know, equity affordability, resiliency, big values of our comprehensive plan, and we've mentioned a lot of that today. In particular, I just pointed out the parking study and that one-to-four study, you know, are going to remove barriers for additional housing in the city. The, the one-to-four study will explore permitting a greater number and type of, of housing options in single-family only districts. So, single-family only districts in our city represent 70, over 70% of our, our city land area that's zoned only for residential use. So that study will be significant in terms of, you know, potential impacts to additional housing production across the city. Even though we've tried to kind of think about these in parallel, separate structures, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was adopted a few years ago and, and updated in 2018, Recently, we've had sort of various conversations that, you know, folks have indicated there may be some tweaks we want to make to that. What you can do with ADUs and in the context of a one to four study, it certainly makes sense to begin thinking about if you have additional, you know, two, three, four unit density on a block, on a lot. How does the ADU play into that? Maybe there's some additional flexibility that we want to consider. So that's something that we'll we'll look at as well as part of that that study to, you know, the goal of facilitating additional production, removing barriers, at least on the zoning code side where we can to to facilitate just additional construction. And then just to point out something else, the on the last page, other other essential work. The St. Paul Development, actually it's St. Paul Trends is what we're calling it now. It's the new name for St. Paul Market Watch. Some of you may know, a few years ago, we had a quarterly kind of data assessment of various different indicators with with development, building permits, demographics, things like that. We have a a new and improved and in dynamic online tool that we're just finalizing now. Moving to a lot more sort of automated updates, pulling in our DSI building permit data. Also looking at some demographic data indicators and there's a actually a section that gets at health, some of the COVID data tracking with the county and the city. So that's something that will give you a lot of information, actually staff, commissioners and the public at large. It will, it should be a great resource and I will have our lead on that, Bob Spalding, come and present on that at a future planning commission meeting.
Luis, there's the commissioners asking questions, would you like them to ask them now or when you're done presenting?
I actually am done, so I am happy to take questions, please.
So I see Commissioner Lindicky and then Commissioner Rizberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am first of all glad to see the return of the the trends report. I was looking at that the other day and I saw it hadn't been done for a few years. But my question was about coming back to the conversation we had earlier about this development and the difficult work of implementing the comprehensive plan into the zoning code. I don't see inclusionary zoning on this list of the work plan. So can you just tell us where you're at with that? I know we've talked about it before at the commission here.
Yeah, Commissioner Lindick and Chair, thank you. We we've been talking about that, you know. So those of you that weren't with us earlier in the year, in twenty twenty, we had a staff kind of effort. We were initiating staff effort to look at IZ, look at inclusionary zoning. And we're engaging with our housing team as well. And so that was going on and then with with the pandemic. You know, a decision was made that for a variety of reasons, I guess, one, uncertainty about market factors. And two, just, you know, not knowing what was going to happen with housing production generally. That we we decided to pause the project. And one of our our next big steps was to engage with the commission, you know, especially the comp and neighborhood committee, but also our city council, because it's obviously a a pretty big legislative change, policy change, ordinance change. So to to get them involved early on, you know, especially with our legislative aides who support our city council members slash HRA board commissioners, ensuring that they they understand and kind of have a have a understand kind of what their priorities are as well early on in the process. We were going to go out and get a market sort of study or feasibility study to do that. And so, given the uncertainty, we did not engage with that that consultant at that time. So more recently in putting this together, you know, the question of do we bring it back? And, you know, do we reengage and is it, are we in a better place now? And so we're still assessing that, but at this point, part of the the challenge, I'd say, is, you know, I guess if if we were to you know, if if the city council were to prioritize this over say something else we have in our zoning studies list, that's something that that we're going to obviously respond to. But I I don't, I don't know what to take off of this that's that's significant. And there, you know, there are a couple other studies that that will move the ball forward on on housing construction and that I think are important and I don't, I don't want to shortchange. So I would like to continue that conversation with our elected leadership, but at this point, yeah, that that's where we're at in terms of our staffing capacity.
Thank you. Can I just follow up, Mr. Chair, one second?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I I understand the staffing issues and I appreciate your thorough response. I I just would put my two cents in that I think this should be a priority. And my sense of the housing market is that it it's going gangbusters regardless. And there's even bigger spread between rental and and homeownership markets. And so, I don't know, I think that you should make it a priority. And I guess our job is to talk to the council about it, I suppose. So thanks for the information today.
While we're on it, and is Mr. Warner still here? I'm not sure.
I don't see him.
Okay, well. Well, I'll, before I make my comments, I'll go to Commissioner Rizberg and then Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, I was, I raised my hand or I put the Q in the box because I I had exactly the same question as Mr. Lindicky. And given the sort of heart wrenching discussion we just had over this development today, I I really would encourage PED to try to move the ball forward on inclusionary zoning. So we can at least get some of these issues on the table and discuss whether we can have more tools to help make this, you know, new housing more affordable for more people. So I would second everything Commissioner Lindick said, and I hope you'll strongly consider it. You know, I hate to move anything else off the plate, but it today's discussion was just another example of why we need, we need to have these this kind of study moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg, Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks Director Pereira. I appreciate the report out and all the amazing work that you and staff are doing. I I guess not to reiterate everything that I've heard, but I I agree with Commissioner Lindick. And just to highlight a few points around inclusionary zoning study. I think, and and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was more so characterized around the response to kind of why aren't we moving in that direction? Is that there are a lot of other things that staff right now consider a priority. And for probably a lot of different reasons. I know how it can be a staff when elected officials say that we need X, Y, and Z done. I am asking you and your team to allow us to help you with this being a priority. And if if we, Chair, I'm not necessarily trying to put you on the spot, but in general, if if we need to meet with elected officials to say that right now, you've asked us to be a part of the commission, we are saying that this is important, this is what we are hearing, this is what we feel like we need. And right now is coming across as if this ends up being a priority, then something has to leave your system just based on time and workload and everything else. I I want to reiterate that this is important to this commission. And I want to continue to keep saying it in many different ways that this study is important. And in if and when we don't do it, it comes across as those things that are important to us as commissioners aren't important to the city because they're not made a priority. So please allow us to help you in moving this forward to be a priority in the department. If there are concerns that other things in the this, other things in the city need need to be moved. So I I just bring that up, I want to be a partner, I want us to be a partner, I want us to help help in this situation. But I also want you to really hear us that we're saying that we want this to be a priority and we don't see it and we would like to see it.
Luis, I'm wondering if you could respond to that or have a response to that.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner Baker and and others. Yeah, I appreciate that because, you know, it's it is it would be challenging to take on, take it on again at the current, you know, without taking something off, you know, one or more things off the list. And that's just for for my team. I I have spoken a bit with our housing director who, just to give you a little window into into that conversation. You know, so there are a few other things to consider here. We we have the tenant protections ordinance going into effect. We have a very large emergency rental assistance program that our our housing team is really jumping into now and and to to get off the ground. I was essentially told, you know, if we're going to get back to this, you know, in the short term, say, next quarter or two, we may not have have the full participation of our housing team, which to me doesn't doesn't make sense to proceed forward without without their their involvement. You know, I think certainly some work could couldn't could advance before they can jump back in again. But it is something to consider. And then another consideration is even just the impact with sort of existing housing in the community, existing multifamily properties. You know, the the effect of what, you know, the effect of the eviction moratorium and some of that on individual property owners, you know, so having to pay a mortgage but not getting all of the rent that is needed to to cover is another consideration. And so granted, an IZ ordinance wouldn't probably take effect even if we start studying it. This year, it wouldn't take effect until, you know, however long into the future. So the impact of it wouldn't be felt immediately, but just the the some of the things that are going on in in the multifamily sector too are are important context points to to consider in our informing. I think both, you know, housing as well as housing staff as well as our elected leaders leaders at the council. So certainly I would welcome your assistance with if, you know, if it is in fact a large priority like it seems to be, as I'm hearing, to communicate that and work with work with staff, work with me to to bring that forward. And then, you know, this work program is is, while I like to set it at this point in the year and communicate it externally, some things, sometimes things shift, so certain things might come off if we, you know, we were to add add this back in.
So I appreciate Commissioner and Commissioner Riley, I I'll call on you here in a second. I just, I think while we're on the subject, I'll just, I'll just say the comment because it relates to what I noted earlier about being, we've been to to my understanding now, a quite passive commission in regards to giving staff the the staff and Director Pereda, who understands kind of the day to day dynamics of his workload and staff and resources, the leeway to prioritize that list for us. And I think I would, I I would think it would be good for for us as commissioners to understand what authority we have in establishing that priority. And so I I, my question was for Mr. Warner to try to explain that and and he's gone. But Luis, I'm wondering if we could at the next planning commission put on the agenda sort of a legal understanding or a just a expla, like a educational presentation on the authority of the commission by Mr. Warner so that we can determine as a commission how we would like to proceed, understanding what powers are bestowed to the commission. And I think it's only, you know, it's not about to Commissioner Baker's point, it's about working with staff, working with the elected officials. What I've heard today was that even commissioners who voted in favor of that application really are prioritizing the IZ's zoning study or the inclusionary zoning study. And so, you know, I I hear all the commissioners when they say it's a big priority for us and on the graph that we're seeing, it's not reflected there. So I think it's, it's going to be an issue that's going to continue to come up with the development around the with the stadium. Additional development just all throughout the city is going to continue to come up. And I think it's something we just need to address. Commissioner Riley.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Pereira, for your clear outline of the work plan. And as, you know, as a new commissioner, I didn't feel confident voting on the very complicated issue of the Alatus project. But I just, I just want to note that inclusionary zoning and affordable housing has been a part of sort of vaguely described in the comp plan since at least the previous plan, twenty thirty plan. So we're talking about, you know, fifteen years of sort of intent to provide enough affordable housing for folks who live and work in St. Paul. And this hiding behind the market has been sort of PEDs and some of the policymakers maybe fatal flaw when it comes to effectively planning for significant housing affordability in our state and in our city. And so I think, you know, given what others have said, and as a person who, you know, when you love something, you, it is, who's one, I think, to be both its strongest advocate and its strongest critic. And so I just want to put in my vote for, you know, my endorsement of the concept that inclusionary zoning is a really important thing. There's a lot of really great resources out there from other municipalities who have gone down this path. And I know that there's not enough staff necessarily to do this work. But when we tell the residents of of St. Paul that affordable housing is important to us and then we don't stand up for it as policymakers or as a as an advisory body, then we don't meet our due diligence of of the work that went into the comp plan. So I just want to want to put that out there. And I will certainly talk to my council member and others and the mayor to to help make room in the work program as needed for PEDs, planning and housing, and DSI's development staff to to work on that that issue. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Commissioner Wong, I see that you wrote a comment in the messages. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to second what many people are saying about the urgency behind getting inclusionary zoning done. And I also want to add that it takes a long time, the whole process, right? Getting a contractor to do the research, to do the study, to do the market analysis, to draft the ordinance. And so it takes a lot longer than we always expect. And so I think that getting started sooner, as soon as possible, would be great. And so as a commissioner, I'm here to support staff, I'm here to advocate to city council or the mayor or whatever is needed to to bump it up as a priority and we're here to support.
Luis, is that something we can put in the agenda or should I reach out to Mr. Warner myself?
No, I can, excuse me, Chair, thank you. I can, I can talk to Peter and, you know, one thing that could be done is the commission, if if, you know, there's general agreement with what's been discussed and interest in this, the commission could ask, you know, pass a And interestingly, this, the commission could ask, you know, pass a resolution asking, asking for the study to resume. Because it, you know, again, to remind everybody, we did do probably three or four months of work on it. That were, that was quite intensive, so we're not, we wouldn't be starting fresh. We would be going back to where, what we, where we left off. So we could have the commission entertain a resolution to, to ask for the study, to resume the study. And we have a city, a previous city council ordinance, sorry, resolution that asked for the study along with a whole host of other studies, frankly, both on the PED work program, which we, we have made, we've, we've scratched, you know, we've begun down that path, including the one to four study. But, you know, that, just the number of things asked for at that time, we're, we're not, you know, we didn't have the capacity to, to deliver right away. That was from 2018. So that's another precedent we could look at and reference in a resolution. I mean, it would not be hard to put together a PC resolution for it. And that might be the best way to, to communicate if that's in fact what the commission wants to do. I would have to, you know, move some things around, figure out with my team, you know, does anything come off? And if so, you know, maybe it gets pushed back to next year. That's a bit of a process, but it's not, it's not impossible. I mean, we, we can do it. I, better to know it now and, and start planning and building it in than, than waiting. And yeah, and then just how do we get the housing team engaged in the, in the short or maybe more medium term, given what we know about their work program right now? Some of those things, they're, you know, they're just, we're just stretched quite thin even, even though they're, they're fully staffed, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Director, Commissioner Rizberg, and then Commissioner Baker.
Yes, thank you, Director Pereira. I really appreciate that option. I think it's a good one that we should consider a resolution moving forward to, to resume IZ, the IZ study process. And my question is, given how shorthanded you are in terms of staff, Commissioner Hong talked about, she used, she, she mentioned a contractor. Takes a while to get a contractor hired and stuff. Does PED ever hire contractors to supplement the work of staff and to, to move things forward? And are, is there, is there funding available to do that? Is there something we can do to help?
Yeah, Commissioner Rizberg, we do, we have hired consultants for different, different projects. And, and that was part of our next step was to engage a consultant around, you know, sort of a technical piece of it, of the study. So that would, that would definitely help, but that, there would still be, you know, staff to manage that and, and to, you know, figure out how to, how to build whatever we're, we, you know, whatever we come up with into our code and sort of bringing it through our process and all of that. So yeah, for sure, that was part of our assumption. Obviously, we'll have to look at our, our adopted budget for '21 to see what, what kind of resources we have to resume a contract this year. So there's some questions with it, both on the, the money side as well as the staffing side. Probably the staffing side is a little easier to figure out if, if we don't have enough funds on our consultant budget. But we could definitely look at that.
Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. I'll be really quick. Also, Director, I appreciate you sharing that information. It gives me more insight into what staff is dealing with. I definitely want to make sure that we as a commission understand the weight of, of this. So I, I would like to offer a, a chair, a suggestion. I think that it will highlight the importance of this. This is in partnership with the director and PED. But I would like to have a, a letter or a memo go to the mayor's office or city council members because what the director is highlighting is that something is need, is going to have to be, something is going to have to be removed from their work plan. So I, and, and that is a decision that I, I don't take lightly, but I do want to highlight that if, if this is to move forward, then something more than likely will be removed. And with that, that means that there may be commissioners and/or the mayor that is really pushing something. And I, I don't want PED to go it alone. I, I need them to hear the voice of the commi, I would like them, I don't need them. I would like them to hear the voice of the commission. I feel like it will be supportive of PED and the work that director is trying to do. And also it will highlight, from our earlier conversation, the importance of this inclusionary zoning study and how much it means to this commission. So as, as a suggestion and actually as a request, I think that a letter around this important zoning study, not saying that staff won't do it, more so saying that staff is going to need to make some tough decisions and we respect that. But we are going to need their patience because something is going to need to be removed off their plate.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Commissioner Baker, because I think, you know, as commissioners, we volunteer and we hear these, you know, we hear the applications and we hear, we take the time to review the materials prepared by staff. But there's a lot going on with staff, there's a lot going on in other aspects, in other departments and at the city level that we may not be aware of that is just as important or has a, a large importance and the, the decision of staff to, to do what they're doing. So I think we don't, as a commission, I think we want to express our view and highlight the importance of what we see on a daily basis and kind of the issue that we're tasked with. But I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, we also don't want to maybe fumble some balls that are being juggled in other locations that may make things situations, situation worse and, and another aspect that's also really important.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I, you know, I think a letter, a PC resolution, you know, there's probably room for, for both. Yeah, I, I think we can continue to talking about this, but definitely we can, we can talk about commission authority and even bring, probably bring some initial language for, for this, for consideration. And in fact, I think we have a steering committee that we wanted to set up for the 19th, so it might be a good thing to discuss there first before the, the full commission meeting.
I agree and, and I, you know, thanks, thanks Luis for, for the clarification and for, you know, being open to the ongoing discussion. By no means do I think that this is like the end of it and, you know, we're just going to do it. I think, I, I really think we just need to have an open discussion about, you know, what, what the options of the commission are. So see no additional questions. I'll move on to the task force liaison reports. Commissioner Grill left. I don't believe she's met yet. Is that correct, Mr. Kermit? If he's on. Otherwise, Commissioner DeJoy?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Anything with regards to the, the task force that Commissioner Grill was assigned to? I think you, you might be the person to ask about that. Might be wrong.
If you're talking about the, the Hillcrest master plan that Commissioner DeJoy is on, I, I can help with that.
Oh, it's, I see Commissioner DeJoy is on. She can, I'll ask her about that. But do you know of anything about the West Seventh Corridor?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I am not working on that one. Anton Gerbi is. I don't know if Mr. Gerbi is online.
Chair, this is Anton Gerbi. There's no update for the review corridors, stationary planning task force?
Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Gerbi. Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes, we have a meeting February 16th is our monthly community advisory committee meeting. We expect to be doing more community engagement in March. I don't have details, but probably we will be discussing that at the February meeting. And I did post in the chat here the link to the initial development framework for your information. We haven't met since our last planning commission meeting, so I don't have any updates. Just moving forward, February 16th. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. Any questions about the task force? All right, any old business? New business? So we will be adjourned for the February 25th, February 5th, 2021, St. Paul Planning Commission. Thanks to everybody for attending and for everybody who spoke. Thank you for your comments today. And we'll, we'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Thanks, everyone. Stay warm.
Thank you.